Call this being of County Council. George, if you want us to play.
Glad you waited so long. We're glad you saved America and we salute a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody good to see up here. Begin with the minutes of our September 19 meeting. Is there any additions or corrections? We have a motion by Dale seconded by Tracy to approve the minutes of the September 19 meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. First up on the list today is our Maintenance Director Josh Jarboe. Josh, do you have anything? He's got a 144 request.
Yeah. There's two copies there. Yeah, this is a request for hire, moving from part-time to full-time for John Jones. And I was going to say bring it back to the beginning of those pay periods, so that would have been last Monday. I think that he's definitely permitted himself, so ready to go ahead and move forward with that.
Okay, I know we've talked about that before. And that line item is budgeted for a full-time position, right?
Yep.
What's your place?
Move back date, does that create a problem of any type?
No. He's already working the hours, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to approve it and not say it.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Dale seconded by Tracy to approve the 144 request in the Maintenance Department to move John Jones from part-time to full-time position as of last Monday. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Do you need anything else today?
No, I think about it, but I will be getting with you guys about. I had a Homefront out here today and we looked at, you know, when the time comes possibly tug pointing the courthouse, they'd like to be involved with that when the time comes and also some exterior painting probation and the courthouse while they're. If they was to get the bid, potentially clean it up, pack the pressure washing when they had to lift here and possibly hang, so that's something that for later day.
Has anybody been here and took a look at the workload yet?
Yeah, he was here today.
Oh, he was here today.
Yeah, which Jonathan, he is, his previous employer was North McCannable. And then he ventured out on his own, now he's got his own business. So he's got base area and all that now, so quite the variety of different people we can potentially use in the future.
Okay. What was the name of his company?
It's called Homefront.
Are they local?
They are based out of Greenville, I believe. Him and his partner combined for, you know, numerous years of experience and then his partner's father also. So those three are kind of in the startup phase and looking to expand. He's always done good work here, so definitely try to keep that contact for sure. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Josh? Thanks, Josh.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, 911 Director Kelly Van Meter is here with the 144 request.
Hi, yeah, my 144 is to fill a full-time vacant spot that I have. Malia Dai, she came to us last summer. She came out of Jason Floyd's Law class vocational, we hired her part-time. She has more than proven her ability to do the job well. She's my kind of overachiever, she's young, so she's really. So I'm wanting to move her into the full-time vacant slot that I have, from part-time to full-time. That would be starting on October the 9th on her full-time, maybe the next pay time or the next Monday of when I start.
I'll make a motion that we approve that 144 hire for Malia Dai from part-time to full-time starting October 9th.
Yep.
Second. We have a motion by Tracy seconded by Dale to approve the 144 request, 911 Department, to move Malia Dai from part-time to full-time. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Is that all you need today, Kelly?
I do believe unless you guys have anything for me.
What's her starting salary?
It would be $15.38.
Anything else? Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, thank you guys.
Recorder Lisa Whithe is here. Lisa, what have you got today?
I'm actually coming, we're kind of package deal, the recorder, the assessor and the auditor's office. We're going to be doing some training on October 18th, so we're coming to you guys today to kind of let you know that we are going to need to close our offices. We're going to close at noon and we're not going to reopen until the 19th at 8:30. This is a training that we're required to do in order to meet the state's requirement for us to allow e-recording beginning on January the 1st of 2024. And we would be happy to answer questions if you have any questions.
Both offices need to close at that same time?
Yeah, we have a vendor coming in, we're going to be training simultaneously because the e-file works from office to office that way. We'll have examples to go through. And this is actually having to do with the way we process e-file sales disclosure, which I don't know if you're aware, but sales disclosure is probably the most important thing that we do. Everybody on my staff learns how to do these because the biggest influence on your assessments is the sales and how they are. So having those correct, getting those done right, making sure our communication is, I don't know if you've ever watched this, but our staff constantly goes office to office because of these sales disclosures. We always try to make sure that each office understands anything that stands out that needs to be flagged or followed up on. It's something we all take very serious and so doing this through a computer e filing system, we have to make sure that the workflow doesn't change much. So we're not lowering our standards just because people kept coming to the courthouse. On top of that, I think we found that, you know, just being able to train when someone asks a question, if we're able to close and everyone can train together, then all the questions can be heard by everyone. If there's an issue, everybody's involved and is aware. It just is, as you know, I take the training very serious, I require a lot of it just to work in my office, so it's not something we can do haphazardly.
And ultimately, I think it's more convenient probably for us to close this same day because like if Jane's office was to do it one day, they would be closed and then it would affect my office because we do all work so close together.
And but what like what she was just saying, what if Jane's office, you know, runs one, then it gets sent to another office immediately. So being available to go ahead and do the training simultaneously.
Together.
We can actually send practice sales disclosures through the system and see if we have any glitches. My biggest concern is being able to flag things for like we have to be aware of sales disclosures that have to do with splits, combinations, use nonprofit organizations that are either owned, currently owned or are selling. Home sets, all these things are involved in sales disclosure. So being able to communicate that. And that's what we've, amongst us, we've decided that it'd be best if we closed, get it done right. Even then, it takes several weeks for the system to begin to work and then just have enough practice time to do it otherwise.
I'm going to approve the closure on the 18th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale seconded by Tracy to approve the office closure on October 18th for the recorder's office and the assessor's office for training purposes. Any further questions?
Isn't the auditor's office?
Yeah.
Are you going to be?
Yes.
On part of this deal, okay, I'll amend that to say.
And we're going to be there until noon in the treasure room. Well, Lamont said she was going to come over, but yeah.
I don't think there'll be hands-on and.
Yeah, as much, yeah.
Okay.
So the public will have access to us at this point.
Auditor, recorder and assessor will all three have hands-on training that day, okay? Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. There you go. Thank you very much. Representing the Extension Office, Heather Caldwell is here. Heather?
Come on up.
Hello, everybody. Been a little bit since I've been here, so I thought I'd give you an update. We survived the fair, we're all in one piece, everything's good. It's very fair. Just a couple of programs that we're working on now that I want to give you guys information on them. 4H enrollment opened October 1st, which is Sunday. We already have 22 enrollments in, which is great. We're going to, that'll be open until January 15th. Last year we had 454 total enrollments between mini-members, which is kindergarten through second grade, and regular 4H or traditional 4H, what we call it, which is third through 12th grade. So we're aiming for always higher numbers, right? So we'll be starting some promotions probably next week just to get some attention and some enthusiasm behind that, that's always a positive element. We are also going to be doing in-school visits. We were able to get back into the schools last year after COVID to be able to do that. We'd like to meet with all third-grade classrooms in all of the elementary schools and we're also going to be sending flyers home with all kindergarten kids in the program, so, well, in the school preparation to hopefully promote the program as well. So I think between those two things, we'll hopefully the excitement that we've been able to build over the last four years, we'll be able to get those on that as well. A couple of programs Stephanie is working on. She's actually at a program right now working in third graders, it's called Captain Cash, Financial Literacy for all third graders. So she's currently working for a Grandview Elementary School and then I think she's also going to be at crazy, working with all those third graders. And she also has partnered with the Senior Center. She started this late spring, I guess this year, and she's been doing a cooking class for one. So we had someone come to us who was a widow and didn't know how to cook. And so they asked if we could help since they know we do nutrition education programs. So she's been able to create a class and create a great partnership with LifeStream and with the Senior Center to be able to do cooking class for one. Not only is it helping people who don't know how to cook to cook, but it's also providing a support network for those people that might not have that community, if you will, in the area who's helping with that. So two great programs I think that Stephanie is working on right now. And then I'll have a PAR program in December that we always do one of those for chemical applicators. That'll be December 7th at Expo Hall and all those people will get a mailing and a flyer about that information coming up. That's what I got for you. Any questions?
Did she leave anything out?
I try not to.
Well, you've got a busy schedule.
We do, but we enjoy it.
Well, I appreciate the update.
Not a problem.
We never suspected you folks down there weren't doing something, but I didn't realize you had that muscled one right now.
There you go. We like to use our power for good.
Well, Dale hit some like a point, since I'm on the board, it would be good if you shared a little bit more about the, like he's sitting on the extension piece, like what normally people associate with what you're doing is just 4H.
Correct, yeah. Tracy is our liaison as Extension Board member. And we had an Extension Board meeting last week that we were able to talk to our board members. Extension, of course, is known for the 4H program in every county, but Extension also provides resources and programming for agriculture producers, people who work in the chemical fields like this PAR, you have to be trained and attend so many continuing education hours, so we provide those opportunities for farmers, chemical applicators. We also deal with a lot of home gardening questions. We do soil samples through the Extension Office, so if someone has a flower bed or a garden that is not growing to its fullest potential, I think, we can set up soil samples. And then we, of course, sort of as alluded to with Stephanie's Cooking for One, we also focus on health and nutrition in the Extension Office. Work with, Stephanie is doing some work also with some seniors on like helping, it's called a matter of balance, helping with balancing issues that those may have trouble with in their home, trying to help people stay in their homes as long as possible, maybe older generations. So we do, we're a broad scope of not just 4H, and not just 4H is not the only youth program we do. We do a lot of leadership, we do a lot of, like I mentioned with this financial literacy. We'll do garden classes with some programs, we do a lot of STEM work with youth in the community, Bay Central. The end of last year, we did a lot of STEM programs in our first and second grade classes. And we will be communicating now the new programs, our programming year begins September 1st every year. And we have new programs that we can do plus the old stuff, but we'll be communicating with the schools probably this weekend on different programs we can bring into the schools that will let teachers sort of reinforce what they're learning as an additional tool for any of their classes or programs that they're doing in their classrooms too. So thank you, Tracy. As mentioned, we're a broad scope of, we can cover birth to, birth to death and then we can cover everything in between and nobody, people don't have to be a 4H for us to touch them. We're trying to work on that reach to our community and not make extension the best kept secret, but get out there with programs we can do. So I appreciate Tracy's help with that and our Extension Board is about 12 to 15 people that help us look at whether to assess the needs of the community, what's the buzz, what's the need, what's the talk right now, the different resources then that we can pull from Purdue to do those classes for people and help educate and improve our communities.
That's good.
Did you say your applicator certification, is that a certification class or recertification or both?
Well, it's continuing education is the one in December. The actual applicator initial certification does happen through campus, but I have all the information in my office if anybody needs that, yeah, can get you connected that way.
Good stuff.
You bet. Good?
Thanks, Heather.
Okay, you betcha. Thanks, guys.
Probation. Ryan Siggers, Ryan, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I was just seeking to seek approval. I have a work phone that rarely gets used that we're paying about $45 a month for. I think the last three months I received two calls, one of which was from me calling it from another phone to find it because it fell behind my bed, and one text message. So instead of using that money for that, I want to seek approval to have that phone line changed into a iPad line through Verizon so we can take it into the field, I can work from home with it. If officers need information about probationers at night, I can pull it up. I've talked with IOCS, the Court Services Division's IT Department, the one we picked out would interface with all their programs and everything that they use, their pickups that they can use in the field. So it's $799 through Verizon for our contract, so I was seeking approval to extend that since it was over $750. That is coming out of probation user fees that we collect, not out of the county general fund.
Okay, if you want to move from a phone line to an iPad.
Yep.
Well, we can't do it for you.
Yeah.
You know, we'll have to have Michael King take care of that for you.
Now, I have a Verizon rep who's like in charge of our account, he comes around about every year or so, just touch base. He's the one that I've been in talks with about getting it set up and he's basically send an email telling him what he wants and, or what we want and he will just take care of it for us.
Okay.
Actually should make the monthly bill go down a little bit since we're on fine minutes and texts and everything for iPad is just data, so. And we have more than enough budget to cover that for this year.
Sounds good. I'll move to approve Ryan's request for the probation department to have the iPad line and to rid himself of the phone line for that price of $799, is what we said.
We have a motion by Tracy seconded by Dale to approve the request from Ryan Siggers to change a current phone line to an iPad account. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. There you go, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good day.
Thank you. To Michael King back there. Michael, do you have anything?
Just one thing, well, too dangerous. One thing for approval, not a quick informative thing. Got a quote from Dale. I want to get tentative approval to get this approved. I have two servers that I need to get for, one for auditor's office for Loud Finance and one for treasurer's office for Loud Property Tax. The tentative approval I want to get is to get one for each department for $6401, $85. Tentative because I have two other vendors that are supposed to get me quotes against this, but they have not gotten me the quotes yet, they were supposed to already get here. But unless they have a quote that comes in below Dale's, I'm just going to go with Dale. It's got a three-year warranty on it. We've had good experience with Dale for supporting their product. I have sent this to Loud, they said this will do exactly what we need, the software for supporting the Loud software. Between my existing funds this year, I should be able to move money around to take care of this, both these servers. But they need that to get the upgrade that Loud needs to get in, so they need that.
Okay, so it's by request from Loud that this has to be done?
Well, the two servers we have also have past end-of-life, you know, they're seven years old. So actually eight and a half years old for the two. But they need to have newer version of Windows for one. They got Windows Server 2012 on, they need a newer version for Loud to install the new version of Loud that that auditor person needs, she's taking that away. And then you guys are real picky about that property tax stuff that you want collected. What do you say? But then the hardware's also starting to have problems. I've replaced some drives, I've done some things, but we're getting to the point now that the further along we go, the more problems we're going to have, so we need to get it replaced. So, you know, eight and a half years on the servers pushing it.
Yeah, that's quite a while.
I'm going to approve the request. Tentative or whichever condition you want.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale seconded by Tracy to approve the IT Department request on a server from Dale for $6,401.85.
It's two of those.
Two of them.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other thing is.
Hold on a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
The other thing, I got an email from Rico yesterday saying that the copier contract, service contract for the surveyor's office was in. And I think that's the same service contract that we had for the other copiers that were bought at the same time, so that goes to show that those copiers are in the realm of being replaced, so are going to be needed replaced, so it's just something we need to keep in mind. So. Another one of those expenses that we'll just have to watch for.
Okay, thanks for the warning.
Just something that we have to, you know, have to be aware of.
Yeah.
Everybody needs to be aware of, if they fail, if it's not under a service contract, that means that we have to pay for the parts and labor. You know, so.
Right.
Dang if you do, dang if you don't, so if you don't have a service contract, it means we have to pay for it, or the other way, so.
So when did you say that, was that the service contract?
I got the email yesterday saying it was done.
Oh.
It wasn't a forewarning, it was a notification. You're done, so.
So are you planning to?
I got an email off to them and said, okay, where do we go from here? What can we do?
Okay.
So we'll see what happens. Anything else for me?
Anybody got anything else for Michael?
How old are those copiers?
I think when we got the one for the assessor, it was right around $5,000. But they can go, I think they purchased those 10 years ago, 11 years ago. The one for the assessor's office has somewhere around 700,000 copies on it. I'm not sure how many surveyor's office has on it, but they have had it for their primary printer and copier. Same thing for the assessor's office. So you can get quite a few copies and work out of them, but it, you know. And on the surveyor's and the, or the assessor's one, the cost per copy on it is just under half a cent for black and white, so the cost per copy on the service contract is pretty low, so. Works out, but again, so, okay.
Thank you, thanks, Michael. Along a friend is here from Community Corrections. Alana, do you have a 144 request?
A part-time person in the back.
Part-time?
Facility officer, yes.
Okay. And do you have a copy of the name? And what's your place?
Well, I could move to approve for the facility, we said part-time.
It is part-time, I think this splits us at full capacity of the people that we.
For $15.50 an hour in the Corrections Department.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Tracy seconded by Dale to approve the 144 request in Community Corrections for a facility officer, Donovan Pennington. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
Thank you.
Is that all you need?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
EMA Director Wade Wong is there, Wade, do you have anything today?
I do. And I'm not on my agenda because I just got this in my email yesterday, but I'll go ahead and pass these out. You'll take one of the dark copies and one of the light copies? I kind of separated them that way so I knew they were different copies. But the State Homeland Security EMBG grant came out yesterday, they opened for application, and this is for the salary. It's the one that we've already applied for for last year. We're capped because of our population size to 18,000, but that's pretty much a given that we'll receive that grant once we apply for it. The state still has those EMBG funds, so as long as they have them, they'll pass them out as director salaries for EMAs. So I needed approval to go ahead and apply for that. I couldn't wait until the next meeting because my. I couldn't wait until the next meeting because my deadline for the application was before you guys meet, so. That's why it wasn't on the agenda, Jane, I'm sorry. I thought I made enough copies for you to have on the beach as well.
I'll just get one of theirs.
Okay.
Hang on a second. It would help if I gave you the right paperwork too, wouldn't it? So please pass it over. That's the EMPG grant. And it shows the cap, that's why there's a little table there showing.
The only thing you can do right now is apply for the 18,000.
Right, they can't go any higher because of our population is less than 25,000 at Fayette County. That's all they'll give us, so.
Okay, well, we don't want to, we don't want to leave that money on the table.
No, no, we do not.
This is just basically what we've always, every year, right?
Every year.
We've just done this, right?
So that was the only thing I needed to approve one, then I have a couple of updates I wanted to talk to you all about.
Approve this.
Yeah, I should do this.
Application for this FY22 EMPG salary grant for 18,000. Is it in there?
That's what he told me to order.
Okay.
EMPG salary.
Okay, so the EMPG salary, there we go.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the EMA Director's application for the EMPG salary grant. Any previous question? All in favor, signal five to say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Take care of that.
All right, so to update you a little bit, last night, the Council of City Council approved their portion of the MATCH funding for the SHSP, the State Homeland Security Grant Program, Mobile Incident Command Trailer. They unanimously approved their 27,000, approximately 27,500 for their side of the grant. I'm taking that to the county council this evening. But I did want to highlight a couple of things. To date, since the 10 months that I've been in office, counting that Enduring Needs Grant from SHSP from the state, I've saved the county taxpayers $180,500 in grants that we've been doing. So that's a huge savings for equipment that's desperately needed, and that didn't come off of Fayette County taxpayers out of their funds, so I wanted to highlight that. With the grants that I've already applied for and I'm planning to apply for, that dollar amount actually goes up to, let me find it here, because I want to make sure I told you right. I believe it's $250,000 with what I am applying for, for the next couple of grants, including the EMPG salary, which I just got approved before. So within a year, I will save or at least brought back funds that taxpayers have spent federally back to Fayette County, which I think is really the right way to do things. Next. E-dispatches. So we're in the trial phase right now of a, and this isn't in your paperwork, of a e-dispatch system. Each one of the volunteer fire departments, my office and the Sheriff's Department are a part of this trial. And I've applied for a grant with Whitewater Valley RMC to fund it for the next five years. Now they're meeting late October, and they said they would let me know if we're afforded in November. However, if we're not, I'm going to try to use some Duke Energy grant funds to pay for that system. When I talked to Duke Energy, their representative said they don't care what we spend the money on as long as it's public safety. So I may have some leftover funding that I'm going to spend for some other piece of equipment to fund that. And what that does is it takes the dispatching part of it, it records it, and then it rebroadcast that, and it goes straight to the first responder cell phone. That's a step that Kelly and the dispatchers in 911 don't have to do now. They do it like they normally do it every time, and then it automatically sends a text message or a call alert straight to that first responder cell phone. Those first responders, firefighters can reply in that app and say, yeah, I'm responding to this call, and allows their chief and their leadership to know where they're at. It also allows them to be tracked on a map, showing where they're at and how far away from the response destination they may be. So we're trialing that until probably the end of October, and then we have to make a decision from, on if we're going to keep that system. From everybody that I've talked to, Glenwood previously uses this already for Rush County. Everybody I've talked to liked, they really liked it. So it's a step that dispatchers don't have to deal with. It doesn't even have to be in dispatch. For instance, Everton's piece of equipment we're trialing is in Everton Fire Department. Mine in Glenwood's is in my office, so it works off the radios, so for setup. We do have the one piece that's missing from it, and it's missing from Spillman is the CAD system, because we do not have the proper module for the CAD, which is something Kelly's been working with her vendor to try to give us all. And I've also got Jeff Griffin, who's working on Spillman for me and the sheriff and for Kelly, trying to find that back door access that we think we should have had a long time ago. So we have what's called Rip and Run, which is a module installment. We should be able to get the CAD system to work, so. But I wanted to update you on that. And this e-dispatch system is, it's really cheap, so I think it's going to cost me roughly maybe $3,000 to get everything turned on, and then it's $233 a month. And that's not a contract. If we stop paying, we stop receiving services. So every month, repay that, that bill. So that's the grant I applied for Whitewater Valley Care, or Whitewater Valley RMC, to fund that for five years. Any questions on that?
No. I read the literature you gave me a couple of weeks ago on that e-dispatch thing, and it sounds like a convenient, convenience that we don't have now.
Well, and it also serves as a backup, so if dispatch was to ever go down, Kelly or her dispatchers could come to my office and they could actually dispatch from there. So with my reviews, you know, with cell technology, they just transferred the 911 lines to the phone line, and we're up and running there, so it's a redundancy as well. And I think it's something that's important for Fayette, yeah.
Okay, is that it?
So I'm also applying and partnering with Purdue for a BRIC grant, and this is for a weather station MISO net. So if you ever drive by a major international airport, you look out and you see these big balls sitting out, they're white, they have any things everywhere. There is nothing like that west, or I'm sorry, east of Shelbyville. There's nothing on our side of the state, north or south. So National Weather Service, local news, they're basing all our weather data based on weather stations that are not located near us. So if we get awarded this grant, which is roughly $45,000, we're going to build a weather station here in Fayette County somewhere. And I'm not sure where the best place for that is yet. It has to be representative of the whole county, wherever it will be located. But it will give us real-time and more accurate data, quicker information, so that we can respond faster to changing conditions, so. That's that BRIC grant. Like I said, we're working with Purdue. We've already submitted our pre-application to IDHS, and we're waiting to hear back from them if they're going to approve that. I think it's highly likely we may get approved for it because there's nothing on this side of the state.
When will you know? BRIC?
BRIC.
You already said that? Okay.
And when are you supposed to know on that?
It will.
Do you know when? Or there's no date?
Yeah, they didn't say. So they just wanted the pre-application last week.
I know we've always had really kind of an issue here because of our weather service coming from Wilmington, Ohio, and it's different than, you know, we don't get that. Things happen differently.
Right now, I'm watching Rush, I watch Rushville or Indianapolis, National Weather Service Indianapolis for Rushville. If they get it, I figure it's coming this way. But I also watch Wilmington because if there's something south or whatever, so I'm watching two different weather stations. This will allow us to actually monitor real-time conditions here where we're at, so I think that's another positive step. And then I do want to touch base briefly. Before that, we're also hosting a radiation training for first responders. We're doing that in partnership with Fayette County Health Department, November 21st. I'm sorry, November 15th at 9:00 AM at Robert, John Robert Building in Miller Park, or John Miller Building in Roberts Park. So we're hoping to get a large crowd of first responders, not just from Fayette County, but regionally to come to this training, so. But I think that's a good opportunity. It's something we don't train on very often, and I think it's needed here. Because you never know when radiological materials coming through on the railways or through a semi or even what we have at our little hospital, so.
Or even over Superior, right?
Yeah, Superior, so. This is a training that the Health Department in my office is putting on, and we think it will be a really good success, so. And it's free. It won't cost anybody anything.
Good.
Finally, and I'll get out of your hair, with this Mobile Incident Command Trailer, the city approved their MATCH. I want to make sure that we're all fully aware of what happens. If the county council tonight does approve their side, we're, we'll go. I've got to get that information in quickly, but should they not approve that, it's highly likely we'll ever see another dollar from State Homeland Security. So this is, already they've had to deal with two grants that will return, and they won't keep, keep grant awards if we don't accept that. So, and I'm not, I'm just trying to give you information. I want you to be fully aware. This EMPG salary stuff, that would stop, so. We really need them to get on board with this, the commissioners, and from the wording I'm hearing, there's a few that's wanting to shut it down. And that's okay. It's their money. They can do that, but they'll not ever see another DHS dollar in Fayette County.
What was that amount again that we need that much?
27,000.
27?
Yeah, I think it was 27,343.51. I just want everybody to be aware. I'm not saying they're going to or they're not. I just want you to know what happens if they don't, because this would be the third grant that they return, so.
Even, even before you applied for that $150,000 on that trailer, didn't they, I thought they left you with the impression that if you got the grant approved, they would stand for the.
I think one council member opposed it, but that's okay, so.
But that would be a lack of integrity now at this point, to back up based on that needing to approve where you go.
That's why I think, and I may be wrong. I'm not 100% right all the time, and I'm human. But I know if we return a grant to IDHS and it's awarded another time, they're going to get tired of even us even reading our applications. So it's going to have a negative impact on the county where, you know, this is such a positive and forward-moving project that we're working on. It's going to bring public safety together, so.
It'll just bring us up to where we should be, really, so it's a needed, it's not a want, it's a need.
And during my meeting with the city council, I was asked about having MOUs with the region, different counties, things like that, for this piece of equipment. And what I told the council member last night was, I'm worried about making this a resource that somebody else can control. We need to maintain control of it. It's a shareable resource within our county. If we need to be deployed outside of our county, then they should go through proper steps to request, things like that. We don't want to bring other districts, other counties into the table to where they have a seat at the table to dictate how we use our equipment, so. I just wanted you to be fully aware of kind of some of the questions that I was getting last night.
Okay. Have you taken away too much of your time? I guess that's it, Wade.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Highway Department, Jay Havon, Jay, do you have anything?
I don't really have anything. I paid over to do it.
Well, let us know what you need. Have you got all the chips and you haven't done for the year?
Yeah, we've been all that done. We've been burning roads. Took the old saddle out, been using it. And we worked till yesterday. We had to bring it back in, taking it out and repairing it because it's an 89. It hadn't been used rawer, and it's showing, it's showing the same. But we're good. We're putting it back on the road for tomorrow. We'll see what we can do with it then. But we've been brush, brush cutting, and both those machines are down right now. Hoses.
Hoses?
Yeah. Seems like an evergreen thing when you're trying to stretch that arm out there to cut a tree. You're snagging on something else and it tears the hose off. Even the new one has that problem. But we're, been picking up trash throughout the county. Seems like everybody dumping it everywhere anymore. Put a couple of cans in. We got another one to do, and I think we'll have one more after that, so.
Okay. Anybody got anything for Jay? All right, Jay, thanks for coming in. County Surveyor Bill Mackey. Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got one thing. I got some letter went out on the report of contract final inspection and recommendation of acceptance of Bridge 90. So final inspection was done, and Dot's recommended it. We accept it, so I need all three of your signatures for Bridge 90.
Now, is this the end of Bridge 90?
Should be.
For sure?
Hopefully. For two years. Yeah, that's what I think is. County accepted.
Well, it took a while, but it's a nice bridge.
I don't know about the final inspection person.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the final inspection and recommendation for acceptance on Bridge number nine. Any further questions? All in favor, signal five to say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Are you going to want all three of us to sign this?
Sure.
Now we have, Bill?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you. Does County Attorney have anything for us today?
Not yet. I mean, I'm sure I'll talk about the agreements.
Okay. Anybody have any mail we need to, I care?
I know a little bit of.
I know a little bit.
Okay, under old business, we have some agreements with Union County Transit Institute. And Todd Jennings was here last month, talked about this. And we're going to receive these documents. I've got a paper copy over here. If you look these over, it's all between us and Union County as far as public transit goes. I had the, I sent Jeff an electronic copy of these for his review. Do you have anything to say about this stuff?
Just know what you're getting yourself into. I mean, you're essentially giving Union County a lot of... I look at you kind of giving Union County a power to turn, they can do a lot of things on your behalf. I don't know how much choice you have in matter. I'm privy to those discussions at the state level. The only other thing I would tell you is, one thing that was weird to me is that if you have any disputes, it goes before, we try to resolve it and then we could get a mediator. But if not, then it would go before NDOT and NDOT makes a final decision. That's what was a little unusual.
Well, this is all part of the state's plan to regionalize the public transit systems around. And I think there's, we're sort of like ground zero on this. And if there's, if they have to go through a learning curve through this process, I think it looks like it's going to happen here. We're in the curve.
And I think it was good that, I think that's what I heard from Todd. He acknowledges that, that this is the beginning of it. And if anything should come up as a problem. He's actually from our county also, so he wants things to go well for us. I don't think he has a, I think he has a good intention for Fayette County. So that's a good thing for us and he's not, you know, I guess we're moving county.
Well, my only real concern is that our level of service here in Fayette County is not affected adversely. Everything just goes unnoticed as far as the customer is concerned.
That's right. I feel like that's what they intended to be. So we'll see, like you said.
Anyway, I understand if we don't sign it, we get no more funding. If I'm understanding that right. Yeah, they're kind of holding that, holding that out there. I don't know how serious they are, but they certainly imply that.
Yes. So is there two things we need to move on or just one with this?
Well, as far as we are concerned, there's what? Only one, one document, the only we need to sign.
So we need to approve the resolution, the authorizing resolution. And then there's an intergovernmental agreement between our county and...
Okay, then we would have to sign the agreement.
And pass the resolution.
After, after authori, after passing the authorizing resolution. So we have a resolution twenty-two thirty R seven to consider. And if you want to, if we approve that, then we approve the signing of the intergovernmental agreement between the Union County Commissioners and the Fayette County Commissioners. And there's a third section here that the Transit Authority sealed, oops, signature. Now, they have given us a, an October thirteen deadline on this. You don't have to do it today if you don't want to. But in order, if you have, if you want to meet the deadline, you would have to come in for a special meeting on this. I under, you know, I understand the hesitation on this because I'm not quite sure how this is going to work out myself. I don't think anybody is.
I don't know what choice you have, to be honest with you. I mean, it's not one of those where a year from now this stuff turned out to be great and you're the evil empire because you did it. I mean, I don't, they're really saying this is going to be regionalized and get on board.
It's the expectation, right?
Well, it's something that we don't really own.
Right.
You know, so...
It's government's money.
Yeah.
Yeah, subsidized is what we have, right?
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this agreement. First of all, the authorizing resolution, that we need to approve that first.
Reluctantly second. Okay. We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the authorizing resolution, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash seven, establishing an agreement between the Union County Commissioners or giving the Union County Commissioners authority over matters pertaining to the public transportation services within Fayette County. Any further question? All those in favor signify the say an aye. Three ayes. Okay, takes care of that. And Jane, you're the only one that signs that.
Right.
Okay. Now we have the...
The intergovernmental...
The intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, we have to approve this intergovernmental agreement for fifty-three eleven and fifty-three thirty-nine funded rural public transportation between Union County Commissioners and Fayette County Commissioners.
And we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the interlocal, intergovernmental agreement between Union County Commissioners and Fayette County Commissioners. All in favor signify the say an aye. Three ayes, Jane. And we will notify Mr. Jennings that we've done this approval. And I think Union County will have to follow up on it. Anything else under old business? Okay. Under new business, we have the twenty-two twenty-four holiday schedule to consider. Are you taking a look at that? Any holidays you want to take out?
We should make note that we have added though, for those people who need to understand that, right?
Well, I see we added one last year, too.
The Juneteenth holiday was added to the holiday schedule? All right.
We don't, well, when do you need, when do we need to have this done by?
Um, eight days. Like I know in the courts, they start asking about this time of year because they start scheduling things. So the sooner, it doesn't have to be this meeting, but if you could do it by the next meeting, we'd do it.
Okay. You don't have to do it today, but if you want to do it today, you can do it.
All right, I made an motion.
You already made an motion and I approved it. When you were talking, sorry.
All right, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the twenty-two twenty-four holiday schedule as presented. All in favor signify the say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Okay. You have anything else under new business? Jane, you have anything else under new business? Do you have any patron concerns today? Anybody have anything? Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Fred Gemnas. I'm the retail wholesale department store union international rep. I represent the Fayette County Highway People. We've been in contract talks for, well, since July. We're still waiting to sit down and finalize the health insurance and wage opener. I know everybody's got a very busy calendar, but we're just here to ask, since everybody is here, if we can look at our calendar, get a date where we can sit down and try and finalize the negotiations.
Okay, well, Fred, thanks for coming in. I don't think I've ever met you.
You have not. No, because the other, last month it was my boss, Jason Ware, was here. I wasn't available. So, yeah, but I am the one that's servicing the highway people. Also EMS, everybody that the retail wholesale department store represents here, I am the service. I service all of them.
Okay, so you're going to be the guy we see.
Lloyd Shaker is no longer, Lloyd is gone as a...
He resigned. And so we are in the process of finding a replacement for him. And once that happens, then they will take it over. But I will be either myself or somebody else with the international will continue to oversee. So for now, I'm the point person.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I'm glad you came in to let us know about this, Fred. As far as scheduling something right now, I don't know. We haven't had a chance recently to talk about scheduling another session with these guys. Personally, I'm reluctant to set a date today. You know, I don't know what their schedules look like.
I would just appreciate if, as a course of journey today, if you can get together and coordinate your guys' calendars and try and come up with a date.
Let's try to do something this month, Ann, will you?
No, I know the only thing that, that I know will not work, the only dates that will not work for us is going to be the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-third of this month. But other than that, either myself or my boss will be available. We'll make sure of it because we need to get this done.
How about Jason? Jason, you're a boss?
Yes. We'll get somebody or either Eric Schwartz. But somebody will, we'll make sure somebody's available. And if you want to reach out to me, call my cell, please. And then my email is under as well.
All right. Now, you don't have to come all the way down here from Grand Rapids, do you? Really?
I'm here every week.
Really?
Every week, every day during the week. So that's what we got to do. We do what we have to do.
Okay, well, we'll try to make it as convenient for you as possible. How's that?
You give me a date, I'll be here.
Okay.
All right. That's all I have.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other patron concerns today? Not that all that leaves left is claiming payroll.
I'll second that.
A motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve claims of payroll. All in favor signify the say an aye. Three ayes, Jane. Jane, is this, is this right? This was already signed. What more? That's already...
Okay, yeah. I think last time she had this for the prior payroll, but she didn't have all of these. So she probably just is keeping them together.
Okay. That explains it. That explains it.
Thought you were going to catch it, didn't you?
Anything else? We forget any, anything?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to adjourn. All in favor, signify the say an aye. Three ayes, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.